Go. Calling this meeting in order, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
DePena?
Here.
Graziano?
Here.
Councilmember Notar is not present this evening. Councilmember Robel?
Here.
Strumlow Burke?
Here.
Mayor Melham?
Here. Sunshine notice?
As soon to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in December 18th, additions of the Star Ledger and Bellevle Times. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Bellevle Town Hall bulletin board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any items for executive session? I don't believe so.
No, sir.
Seeing none, we're going to go into discussion. I know we're going to take some different actions later on in the meeting. We're still going to have this discussion. We might as well still have it. So do we have Dean Donatelli on the line?
Yeah, Dean, here.
Okay, so it's a little difficult, council members, because we're not all here present. So I'm going to try just to explain what we're doing right now. We're entering into item number five, which is discussion. We have with us Dean Donatelli, who all the council is familiar with. Dean is our redevelopment council. We had on first reading, last meeting, two different ordinances pertaining to a five-year rehabilitation as opposed to a redevelopment. We voted on that in first reading. I do believe we're going to take some actions later. But in the meantime, we had wanted Dean to come before the council. Normally, we would have done this in a caucus meeting, where he could have come before us physically and explained what was going on with this particular ordinance and what we were about to do. Since we did not have the opportunity to do that, obviously, as every council member knows, we always have the opportunity to reach out to the clerk or reach out to the manager or reach out to Dean directly to get any kind of information that we need to cast our votes. But having said that, we do have Dean on the phone right now. So we're going to kind of act like Dean is here to give us an overview. So Dean, in simple terms, almost layman's terms, if you could just give a brief overview, not particular about the bridge project, but just the overall ordinance that we have to create. And then any council member, I'll open up for any council member that has any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. So what this ordinance provides for is a five-year tax exemption. And just to break it down, and as the mayor said, it only applies to properties who have been declared by the council as an area in need of rehabilitation. And there are certain criteria under the statute which would qualify an area or property as an area in need of rehabilitation. So if a property in the township is designated by council as an area in need of rehabilitation, under this ordinance that you're considering, it basically establishes three, I'll call them programs, of rehabilitation or exemptions. There's kind of three groups of properties. Each abatement, each exemption is unique to each group of property. The first group of property is one and two family dwellings. Improvements to one and two family dwellings. Those would be existing homes, one and two family homes. They must be 20 years or older. And those properties, if a property owner were to do improvements to that property, up to $25,000 of the improvements would be exempt from taxes for five years. So that's kind of the first program for one and two family owners, 20 years old, up to $25,000 of improvements would be exempted for five years. The next group, second group, are improvements. The multifamily dwellings, three families or more improvements, commercial and industrial structures. So it's improvements, the multifamily dwellings, the commercial and industrial structures. That program is an exemption of 30% of the value of the improvement. If those improvements would result in $50,000 or more of conventional taxes, and if the improvements would result in $50,000 or greater than $50,000 in conventional taxes, then 100% of those improvements would be exempt for five years. So that's the second group of buildings and improvements that would be eligible. The last group is the new construction of commercial, industrial, and multifamily dwellings, again, three or more. And in that case, it's called a stepped-up abatement. Again, it's five years. The first year, the property, the improvements would be totally exempt. The second year, the owner would pay 20% of the taxes that would otherwise be due. The third year, the property owner would pay 40%, the next year, 60%, the next year, 80%, and then ultimately to full taxation. So those are the three categories of exemption. The first category I mentioned does not require a financial agreement. It's basically approved by the tax assessor. The second group I mentioned, which was improvements, the multiple multifamily dwellings, that is approved by the tax assessor with a resolution of council. And then the last program, no financial agreement for that second group. The last group, the new construction of exemptions for new construction of commercial or industrial structures, that requires an ordinance of council and it also requires a financial agreement to be approved by council. And that's kind of the summary of the program. And given that this exemption is only applicable to properties that have been designated as an area in need of rehabilitation. And to date, in your township, only one property has been designated in the area in need of rehabilitation. And that's the property at the former Finkelstein property. It was the Walter, former Walter Kitty site. That is the only property currently designated as an area in need of rehab. And that's the summary of this ordinance.
Thank you, Dean. So just to put it in a little more layman's terms, we get a lot of people that ask us all the time, or I shouldn't say they ask us, but we often hear about people that want to make investments into their house. They want to put an addition on the house. They want to do some different things. And they often feel that they get penalized because their taxes immediately go up because they improved the house. This is something that can kind of offset that, at least for five years. So I want the council to understand that. And second, you might be asking yourselves, why now? The answer is quite simple. Ordinance number two, for second and final reading tonight, is the bridge development down at the Finkelstein Walter Kitty site, the 24 acres down the valley. In order for us to grant them the five-year rehabilitation pilot, we would need to create the entity or create the opportunity. So that's what we're doing now. However, we are taking the extra step to not just do this for commercial properties. We're taking the extra step to make sure the ordinance actually works for single-family, two families, threes, fours, anybody that wants to improve their house. Now, there's numbers involved and there's criteria involved, obviously. But now it looks like that we would be able to let them make an improvement to their house and almost defer the taxes for a couple of years, which is an incentive. And in doing so, we also then have the ability to offer this to the 24-acre site for the bridge development. So this is discussion, and it's a little, it's just not easy to organize it because half are physically present here and half are on the phone. So I'm going to just start, it's easier to just go by name so that this way, if you have a question for Dean or for anybody, you can ask it. The deputy mayor is here with me now, so deputy mayor, I'll let you go first. Do you have any questions for Dean or comments about this?
No, actually, no questions. We had spoken about this today on our conference call. And I think everything is pretty self-explanatory. I just want to say, this could be very big in a homeowner's pocket and very little out of our pocket. So I think this is a really good way to do that, especially now in this environment. It'll boost construction a little bit, I think, and boost people to do some improvements to their property. That's all I got.
Good. Okay, we're going to go in alphabetical order next. Councilwoman DePena, any questions, comments?
No, nothing at this moment. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Graziano?
No, I totally agree with Deputy Mayor, and I think it's a step in a great direction.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Robel?
Yeah, I definitely agree with Vinnie. But Dean, I had a quick question. I mean, this really does allow us to benefit the residents as well as other people, correct?
Correct, that's right, Steve. That's right, Councilwoman.
This is something I think, you know, Vinnie and I have talked about for a couple of years. And I'm glad, and I greatly appreciate the mayor helping us with this.
Yeah, Councilman, I'll just add that relative to single and two-family homes, it's a relatively easy process. It's a one-page application. It would be reviewed by Kevin Esposito, your tax assessor. And assuming that all the taxes are current, there's an application fee, it's relatively nominal for a single-family. They could propose the fees $100 to follow the application. And it would be approved by, relatively straightforward. We'd have to show that the improvements were completed and up to $25,000 for single and two-family homes.
That's great. Thanks, Mayor, too. I appreciate the opportunity to help the people.
Great, thank you, Steve. Councilwoman Strumlow Burke?
I have no questions.
Okay. All right, so I guess Dean, that kind of is going to end our discussion on this. We, I guess, you know what? We might as well just quickly discuss it right now. And Dean, just stick around if there's any additional questions. There's going to be a motion, I'm assuming, by the deputy mayor when we get to the ordinances for second reading. In light of our, today's redevelopment meetings that we had, myself, the deputy mayor, Councilman Graziano was on those calls as we are monthly. We have been advised or told by Dean, our redevelopment council, that these two ordinances might not necessarily be ready to go at this time. So I'm going to, when we get there, I'm going to entertain a motion to table both of them. And then when we get to resolutions later in the day, I'm going to also hopefully entertain a motion to table number five. So this is going to come back before us, council, so I'm glad that we had the opportunity to have the discussion. But because of some technical matters that Dean still needs to work through, we're going to entertain a motion to table both of these when we get there later. But we did have the opportunity to talk to Dean. I feel confident that he's explained it to us. I feel confident that we're all educated now enough to make a decision, hopefully in the next meeting, actually. Okay, so I don't think we have any questions on that. So Dean, you're probably good to go for now. And we're going to move forward with the rest of the meeting. So we are on item number six, which is the approval of minutes.
Combined?
Thanks, Steve. Take care. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks. Thanks, Dean.
Combined conference and regular meeting of April 14.
Make a motion? We have a motion to approve the minutes from April 14. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumlow Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Next item we have is item number seven. It is the report of the manager. Just before he begins his report of the manager, we failed to do this before. Do we have a list of department heads or directors that are on the line?
Yes, I can tell them.
Okay, so departments, directors, please listen for your name. The clerk is going to call out just so we can check he's into the meeting.
Yara Costa? Kevin Esposito?
Present.
Judith Kern? Mary Cavanius?
Does Judith ever call in?
I'm here.
Colleen Burton?
I'm here.
Frank DiLorenzo?
Here.
Will Mulatto?
Here.
William Gilbert?
Here.
Marty Lutz?
Here.
Tom Haritz? Tom Augusta?
Here.
And Chief Oliveri?
I'm here.
And Mr. Hood is also physically present with us.
Thank you.
Maybe Marty Lutz?
I said his name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay, so I believe we have all the department heads checked in. If I hear a beep on the line in the next couple of minutes or so, I'll ask to see who that was. So without further ado, six feet apart from all of us, we have Mr. Iacono's manager's report.
So my manager's report this week is going to be relatively light. So we always start off by thanking all of our employees for doing such a great job under this crisis. A special shout-out to the tax office today. We started taking taxes yesterday. And again, the office is under certainly a lot of pressure to collect taxes. And we have new protocols put in place where residents are allowed in the building. Their temperature is being taken. They must have a face cover on at all times. And we still are strongly encouraging residents to pay their taxes online or certainly pay their taxes by mail. If they must come in, they have to follow our protocol. We have been, the finance team has been working very hard on the 2020 budget. As you know, we went from February to March, then March to April. It was pushed back to today, April 28, for reasons beyond our concern, our control, reasons beyond our control. We were not in a position to introduce the budget tonight. These same reasons are very, very familiar with DCA. So what we did was we contacted DCA. We told them everything that we've done to the point. We're very close and certainly we will be in constant contact with the Department of Community Affairs. And I certainly look forward to introducing our budget in May. The, again, our OEM team, we're following the governor's lead. Executive orders come down on a daily basis. So every day, there may be something new and we have to react and coordinate with those directions. And then the last piece of information I'm pretty excited to share is Mayor Melham asked me to work with him and to put together a BBC, the Bellevle Business Committee. And we're going to reach out to small business partners in Bellevle, business partners in Bellevle. And we're going to get together, whether it's be a conference call or meetings. And we need to share ideas, suggestions, recommendations. We can share some of the experiences and the challenges we're having together. And I think out of the BBC, we may come back and present some suggestions to the mayor and council that would be helpful to the business community in Bellevle. Again, you know, we haven't really been able to measure how severe the economic impact that this COVID-19 is going to have on Bellevle as a community. So we were very aware of it and we plan on addressing it correctly. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next item we have is the report of the mayor. Usually, I take this report of the mayor and give it an update as to prior events we've had, upcoming events that we'll be doing, and different things. Obviously, in light of the current situation, we don't have any past events to talk about, any future events to talk about, unfortunately. So, and I think most people probably see my coronavirus updates, whether they're daily or semi-daily now in the last couple of days or so. So I think that's kind of, I'm not going to beat a dead horse with all that information. The manager did talk about some things that I want to mention. Obviously, he talked about that we still are in a state of emergency. We still do urge social distancing. We still do, there is still a stay-home order by the governor that keeps getting reiterated. The manager and the police chief and the town attorney are on daily OEM calls. I hop on those calls when I have something to report. I sit on three to four to sometimes five different conference calls a day with either local officials, county officials, state officials, or even federal officials now. So we keep doing all of that. I was in town hall most of the day today. I have not been spending much time here at all. But today, I did see the tax collection working. So that was great. And I was able to answer some questions yesterday for some people about how that was going to work. We are taking, as the manager reported, we are taking the temperature of people as they come in, which is a great precaution. And then things that I've mentioned recently. We're still doing some work here. So you saw a couple of meetings ago, Mr. DiLorenzo from the Construction Code Department came before the council, gave us an update. We gave him some recommendations, maybe on different procedures, different policies, different forms, way things look. He is now taking the opportunity, while they have a little bit of downtime, yet they still have staff that are either working remotely or working in here with a skeleton crew. And we are starting to address some of those problems, which is great, I think. I did receive one complaint today. I know we have Mary, Mary, our tax collector, on the phone, on the call. So Mary, I don't know, I wasn't able to verify it myself. I know we are encouraging people to pay taxes online. I'm sorry.
Yes.
We are, okay. We are encouraged to pay people online because we don't really want them to come in. If they do come in, we are practicing social distancing. We have all that placed. But I was told today that the order payments online are not working. I have no way to verify that. I didn't try it for myself. But if you can maybe just look into that, that would be great.
Okay.
And then last but not least, we, as, one of the calls I sit on, I sit on two calls every single week, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Our county executive, Mr. DiVincenzo, puts those together. Every Tuesday, we usually have a special guest. And then the nice part about this is that we, every single mayor, has a chance to ask questions to that particular person. Last week, it was Senator Cory Booker. And any question that we ask on Tuesday directly to that guest or to the county, on our Thursday conference call, we get that answered. Well, this one took a little while, but we spoke with Cory Booker last week. Today, we had the pleasure of having the governor on the call with us. He joined us from about eight, about 9:30 to about 9:45. And it was nice because all the mayors seemed to have the same exact questions. I addressed this Sunday night at my mayor's fireside chat, where I had been getting some questions about the upcoming tax deadline. As we all know, that May 1st is the tax deadline. There is an approximate 10-day grace period where you can make a late payment without fees. And we have been getting asked that question. So much so, that Sunday, on live video, I told everybody it was out of our hands, that we, even if we wanted to make that change, we cannot make that change. It's part of the state constitution. At that point last week, we were actually told that the governor could not make that change through executive order. However, that changed this morning somehow. He must have gotten a better legal opinion from the people that are surrounding him. And this morning at 9:30, he actually announced to us that his executive order that was going to be coming out in the afternoon specifically gives the municipalities the option to delay those first quarter or those second quarter tax payments till June 1st. So that's already up on my Facebook page. I was actually in the manager's office at 2:00 when our tax collector immediately called him when she heard the news. He immediately called our township attorney. And within a couple of hours, we have the resolution drafted that gives Bellevle the legal authority to go ahead and actually make that happen for our residents. So tax payments that were due, and I know this really affects seniors because seniors traditionally have a house that's maybe paid off and they kind of come in and want to make their payments. So this really helps the seniors, I think. But traditionally, May 1st is the due date. You have a 10-day grace period to May 10. However, the governor's executive order, the governor's executive order specifically says that the township council has to pass the resolution. And I have to say that the staff here in town hall worked really quickly with our clerk to get an item on the agenda so that we could take action today. So I thank everybody that was a part of that. And I think our township attorney has something to say.
Yeah, just so it's clear, what the governor allowed the town to do was extend the grace period.
Grace period.
Taxes are still due on May 1st. It used to be you had 10 days to pay it without interest. Now you just have until June 1st to pay it without interest.
So it's an extra 20 days without interest, basically?
It's an extra 20 days without interest. And if you pay it June 2nd, however, just so everybody knows, and the resolution says it, if you pay it June 2nd, you're going to pay interest to May 1st.
Right, 31 days of interest.
Right, so they're still due May 1st. It's just your grace period went from 10 to 31 days, 10 to 31 days or so. So they have to be paid, they're still due on May 1st, but you have a grace period till June 1st. After that, the interest runs from May 1st if you don't pay it by June 1st.
That's a very good point there, counselor. So taxes are still due May 1st. We traditionally have a 10-day grace period built in. You now have an extra 20-day grace period till June 1st. However, if you pay your taxes on June 2nd or June 3rd, you will pay interest back through May 1st. Okay, good. And that's not, in effect, because the governor signed the executive order, that will be in effect in Bellevle because we passed a resolution locally.
Correct. And just so everyone knows, you were, you did not have to do that.
Right.
It gave you the option to do it. Obviously, the town immediately decided to do it. But you didn't have to. It says the townships can pass such a resolution.
Right.
And then I think Mary will get the resolution and send it down to where she's got to send it because it has to be done within three days of the passage of the resolution. So that'll be done as well, so that it goes into effect at that point.
Perfect. Okay, that concludes my report of the mayor. Next item we have is communications. Do we have any communications?
None at this time, Mayor.
We have no communications. So we are going to move forward to ordinances. Ordances for introduction?
Orders number one for introduction and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Township of Bellevle, Chapter 8-2.9 Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets.
Make a motion?
I'd move for introduction.
Second. We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumlow Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Next, we have ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing. Ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the Township of Bellevle, County of Estes, New Jersey, amending the Bellevle Township Code to establish a tax abatement program pursuant to the five-year exemption in the AB law NJSA 48,21.1 et cetera.
So normally, at this point, normally, at this point in the agenda, I would ask the clerk to read our public notice, which educates the public on how they can participate in this process. I'm going to bypass that right now only because I'm going to entertain a motion to table this ordinance. Make a motion to table?
Yeah. Okay. Second.
We do have a motion made in second to table this ordinance. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumlow Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Ordinance number two?
Ordinance number two for public hearing and ordinance creating a five-year tax exemption of local real estate taxes pursuant to NJSA 48,21-1 et cetera to Bridge Acquisition LLC for improvements on real property located at Lot 9103, Lot 1, and authorizing execution of a financial agreement with Bridge Acquisition LLC.
Make a motion to table?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to also table this one. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumlow Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. We haven't had a table in a while.
I know.
Next item is public comments. Need a motion? Make a motion open for public comments?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to open for public comments.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Yes.
Strumlo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mellen.
Yes. At this point, I will ask the clerk to read the notice governing public comments.
Due to multiple executive orders declared by Governor Murphy and in an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19, the April twenty-eighth Township Council meeting will be closed to the general public. The meeting is being streamed live on the township's website, www.bellvelandj.org, as well as the township's official Facebook page. The public always has an opportunity to make public comments to the mayor and municipal council during public meetings. With this new format, if you have a comment, please submit it to the township clerk at k-cabano@bellvelandj.org by six P.M. on Tuesday, April twenty-eighth. Second and final reading, please submit them as well to the township clerk at k-cabano@bellvelandj.org by six P.M. on Tuesday, April twenty-eighth. The township clerk will read into the record your comments or questions concerning the ordinance during the public hearing, and will read your comments during the public portion of the meeting. Please submit your name, address, and state your comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So for the benefit of those watching, traditionally, this is the point in the meeting where the public has the right to speak. Obviously, we, because of coronavirus and social distancing, here seated on the dais is just myself, the deputy mayor to my right, our township attorney to my left. We also have in the room Mr. Iacono and our clerk. Councilmembers and department heads are joining us on conference. Because we cannot have the public here, and the public absolutely has the right to participate in our meetings, we have given them the opportunity to submit their comments via email to our clerk, with a deadline of six o'clock tonight. They had the opportunity to speak on anything, including agenda items. The agenda was posted on the township website as of last Friday. So with that all being said, Madam Clerk, do we have any comments?
Yes, I have three.
Are we going to take them in the same order that you gave them in the meeting?
Yes, we'll start with Mr. Sheldon.
Okay.
First one is Michael Sheldon. His address is forty-seventh Floyd Street. Number one, at the last council meeting, I asked about the status of the introduction of the twenty-twenty municipal budget, and Mr. Iacono indicated that that time would be introduced on April twenty-eighth council meeting. Can you please give us an update on this matter, as there is no mention of the budget introduction in the meeting's agenda? Two, on the township website, Councilman Notary's biography indicates he has a PhD in English from Rutgers University. However, while the Rutgers University registrar's office has provided written verification of his enrollment from September nineteen ninety-five to May two thousand and two, the records indicate he was only enrolled and apparently did not receive a degree, with his field of study being literacy, education, and not English. Moreover, the Rutgers University library, as well the Library of Congress, apparently don't have any record of a doctoral dissertation on file. As verification of the township information posted for him on his website, please submit to Notary's state for the record when he received his PhD from Rutgers, his field of study, and the title of his doctoral dissertation.
Okay, Mr. Iacono, I was in your office today. We discussed the introduction of the ordinance.
The budget.
The budget, I'm sorry. I do not recall last meeting you saying that it was going to be introduced on the twenty-eighth. I would have definitely remembered that, unless I'm incorrect. Did you actually say it was going to be introduced on the twenty-eighth?
No, I said that the initial date of March was, I'm sorry, February is pushed back to March, which was pushed back to April twenty-eighth. And we have been in contact with DCA. So the answer is no, I never said that we were definitely introducing on the twenty-eighth.
And I'm assuming now that the governor's executive order pushing the ability for tax payments to go out to June first, that would obviously impact the budget. I know we have, do we have Judith on the phone, by the way? Judith, are you here, our CFO? Okay, so, and it's still yours to take. So can you just give, because I, obviously, since every, this has now been my second October, November, that I've always said that we're going to submit a budget on time, and we're not going to be late, and all that great stuff. So can you just give us maybe an update on what we expect, or when we expect introduced?
Yes, so just, you know, for the record, we are not, we are not late.
Right, no, and I didn't say that. I said it was my goal not to be late.
Right, and I clearly, based on the amount of work that we've done so far, I'm certain that we will be ready to introduce in May. And I think we sent down some questions to DCA. Again, I don't, I think some of those employees are working from home as well. So until we get some of our answers or our questions answered, we're at their mercy, but I do anticipate that we will introduce in May.
In May, okay, so officially in May. And I, listen, council members, as much as I want to be on time, and I want to be early, and I want to be all that stuff, of course, this year is the craziest year in municipal government history, because we're dealing with coronavirus, we're dealing with emergency expenditures, which will take probably three years to get reimbursed. And we're also dealing with an overall lack in revenue. We're not writing tickets like we used to, court's not operating, construction code's not taking in permits like it used to. So we are dealing with an exceedance in expenditures for an emergency that we could not predict, and we're also dealing with a lack of revenue. So with that said, as much as we were really, really going to be good and really be on target to introduce before it was a late introduction, this all kind of happened in the last month, two months or so, that really kind of threw a monkey wrench in everything. And again, with the governor saying that we can now delay tax payments, it's very hard to anticipate the revenue now. So, okay, that handles, I believe, number one. Number two was a comment, question, okay, got it? Do we have anybody else, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do. We have Mario Jaws from Ninety-Five Bell Street. He states, "March fourteenth, twenty-twenty, I asked two questions via email. Again, I will ask the same. Why is the full agenda not posted online prior to a meeting? I believe it was to be posted by the beginning of March on the township, town website. Same question I have been asking for the past eighteen months. I watched your replies on the town video to my questions. Please answer it. I questioned Resolution Number Six. Your reply was the email was sent at twelve forty-five P.M. today, and the agenda was posted on Friday. There was ample time to receive the full details of the Resolution Number Six if you wanted. You denied my request for a response at the meeting. I'm still waiting for an answer. If I was in person at the meeting, you would give me an answer at the meeting. I had until six P.M. to present my questions. I still would like the answer."
Is that, okay, I'll wait till you're done, because I don't know what the question is on that one, but, okay.
I also asked if it was true that the mayor performed weddings in Town Hall the last month and why. Your reply was the questions have been asked and answered on Facebook, March twentieth and thirtieth.
That is the answer, March twentieth and thirtieth, okay.
First of all, I would not know that since I am not on Facebook. Please answer the question.
But if Mr. Jaws was here, I would say, Mr. Jaws, you just answered the question, March thirtieth.
And March twentieth.
Okay, I'm very confused by these questions. Go ahead.
Is it true the outside painters were allowed to paint mayor and council office in the month of March despite Town Hall being closed? And as for the ordinances that are on the agenda, I must say I do agree with five-year tax abatements.
Okay, so they are only tax breaks to the wealthy developers for five years? Okay, I wish Mr. Jaws was here, actually. So, okay, we have some different comments from Mr. Jaws. Number one, the agenda. Why is it not an agenda? Obviously, Mr. Jaws has been here since January or so. We did hire the services of another company, company that, very similar to the one the school district uses, as soon as that software is up and running. The world is in a calamity right now, people are working remote, companies are not really being as efficient as we would like them to be as soon as it's paid for. And I know our clerk has been working on templates and stuff like that, so I could say that that's coming. And I could also say that in prior administrations with prior mayors, the full agenda was never posted. Is this new that we're not posting the full agenda on the website? No.
The full agenda is on the website.
Well, the agenda is, but all the documents?
No, we've never.
We've never done that, okay, so, we've never done that?
No.
I don't know if that question's ever been asked of prior administrations, but for now, I can tell you that we actually are going to deliver the full agenda and the full packet as soon as the software is ready to go.
Correct.
Number, question number six from the last, I don't really see a question there. The next one is about the weddings. Mr. Jaws is asking whether or not I performed weddings, and then says that I performed weddings, as I've already given that answer, on March twentieth and March thirtieth. So I guess maybe now that is the full answer, March thirtieth and March twentieth, I did perform weddings. There is absolutely no executive order that I'm aware of that prohibits people from being wed, or somebody like me from officiating a wedding. That one's that one. Next one, painters, painters working inside the Town Hall despite Town Hall being closed. Mr. Jaws is once again incorrect in his facts. Town Hall is not closed. I was here all day today. People were here paying taxes. You are allowed inside the building, as long as you have a reason to be inside this building. You can be here by appointment or to conduct some business. So first part, the last part of that is Town Hall. Town Hall is not closed. And secondly, if there is a government contract that allows for someone to do government work, we are doing work here. Unfortunately, nobody can see it, but the council chambers looks much different. There's only three rows of pews here, because either the carpet is being cleaned or new carpets coming in. This is the time to do it when Town Hall's kind of empty. So you might be noticing council members who are on the phone probably can't see it, but our dais looks a little different. It used to be really high, we couldn't see anybody below us. It is now lower. A Town Hall is open, we are doing work. There is absolutely no executive order that prohibits government contracts from stopping. As a matter of fact, this is the time to do some of that work. We've been wanting to make court upgrades. Well, the time to make court upgrades isn't when we have court in session three times a week. It's when court is closed, and court is closed now. So we took the opportunity even to paint this room. So again, if you were here, you would notice that this room was painted. There have been some upgrades in this room. I think we've settled that one. Ordances for the agenda, I'm glad to see that Mr. Jaws does support. He calls it tax abatement, but usually he calls it something else. Usually he calls it a give-back. Usually he calls it, we're giving money back on the taxpayer expense, on the taxpayer dime, but I guess for five years, it's okay. So I'm glad he supports that. Do we have any other comments from anybody else?
I have one more. Of a gentleman by the name of Joseph Kim. He says, "Dear Bellevle mayor and council, as discussed on the phone with the Bellevle Tax Collector team of Bellevle City Hall, we are the landlord of Bellevle Plaza, three thirty-three dash three seventy-five Franklin Avenue, Bellevle, New Jersey. Currently, along with our tenant businesses, we have the most difficult financial times due to the crisis caused by the COVID-19. As one may witness these days, other than the hyperactivity at the farmer's market, the parking lot of Bellevle Plaza for the other businesses is mostly empty, with only few tenant employee cars. The farmer's market alone is doing great business, but the other tenants are suffering greatly. The COVID-19 disease has decimated the non-farmer's market tenant businesses, and there are absolutely no customers for them. The tenants of Bellevle Plaza and the landlord are right now in a financial crisis due to COVID-19. The tenant businesses are experiencing the worst economic disaster on record. To this, the tenants are informing the landlord that they are unable to pay their rent. Farmer, farmer's market, yes, will be able to pay their rent, but other tenants will not be able to. Other tenants are either forced to close by the state, like the nail salon, are mostly closed due to no customers, time stretches on, and no business. In turn, we are experiencing our worst economic disaster on record and unable to pay our property taxes. We are experiencing hardly any funding in our accounts to meet the current Bellevle Township property tax requirements today. We inform our tenants that due to COVID-19 crisis, they will not be able to pay the rent, that they will, they will not pay rent, they will not even be able to make partial rent payments, and have requested, and have requested to delay rent payment until their finances become more attainable. As our tenants are not able to make their rent payments, we will not be able to make the Bellevle Township quarterly property tax bill payments at this time. It is our understanding that Bellevle Township have currently not changed the position on the timing of the requirements for property tax payments. We are experiencing our most difficult economic times due to the COVID-19, and we need help. We were told by the Tax Collector's Office that nothing has yet come from the state government for disaster assistance. We also understand that the federal assistance may be on its way, but that looks like it will take some time before it reaches us and the tenant businesses to help on time. We are hopeful that the state of New Jersey will come out with a better timely assistance program for the business residents of Bellevle Township. We are hoping that these state and federal disaster assistance will open Bellevle Township to better-suited property tax payment policies for its business residents. However, even before these state and federal instructions, we are confident that the Bellevle Township will adapt to more lenient property tax payment policies for its people and businesses to rise out of this miserable state. We do not want to be into for, nor be delinquent in the payment of the Township property tax bills, but without any funds coming in, we will not be able to meet the current payment requirements. As the economic condition worsens due to COVID-19, we as the landlord will face more business difficulties collectively, even more than any other tenants individually. Please help all of us at the Bellevle Plaza at this difficult time and allow a contingent plan that will assist us in this disaster. We need assistance at least in these three ways. One, delay property tax payment by a minimum of three months. Two, do not charge late property tax payment fees. Three, allow us to make partial payment tax payments without late charges. These disaster assistance paths will help us tremendously in these difficult times. Our tenants are suffering through this unforeseen virus disaster, and we want to be able to extend, they have, be able to extend they have to them. However, for us to be able to extend a hand to them, we need a leeway to do so. So please extend your hand to us, so that as a community together, we can help one another to get over the hard times that have landed on us. We hope to hear back from your office soon with some good news of disaster relief and assistance. Thank you for your support and help, consideration, understanding. Joseph S. Kim, property manager of Bellevle Plaza.
So if Mr. Kim was here, obviously, the first thing I would say is that we understand. And all Bellevle's businesses are going through hardships. I'm a business owner, I'm a landowner, I'm a landlord that collects rent. I get it, and it's a terrible, terrible time. I will say that this, I did, this notice triggered a conversation between myself and our tax collector this afternoon. I was then informed that our tax collector has been in touch with Mr. Kim. She spoke with him a couple weeks back, and it was basically the same questions he had. The only thing I will say, just for the benefit of those who are listening, or those who might be also in a similar situation, in the letter, Mr. Kim asked us to change our position. As you heard me on Sunday, and as you realize now through the governor's executive order, this is not our call. We don't have the ability to change our position. We don't really have a position. We have to follow the state guidelines. State guidelines said, as of yesterday, that property taxes were due on the first with a ten-day grace period. As we all now know, the governor has signed an executive order today, extending that just for about twenty days. So as much as I feel for Mr. Kim, and I feel for all businesses that are going through hardship, and Mr. Iacono, as you heard during his manager's report, is interested in creating a Bellevle Business Committee, Coalition, and I think those are some topics that we would be able to discuss and advocate on behalf of our, on behalf of our businesses. Do we have anybody else, Cal?
That is it.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to entertain a motion to conclude, to end, exit public comments.
Make a motion to close public comments.
Second.
We have a motion made, and second, to close public comments. Clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumlo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mellen.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is resolutions. I'm going to give the council just a minute or so to look through. I know we had at least one last-minute addition. That addition was item number seven, which is the extension of the grace period, which we've already now covered multiple times in today's meeting. So I know for a fact that we have to pull item number five.
Yep.
So can we pull that off? Does Councilmember Vell, did I hear you have interest?
Yeah, yeah, I want to pull four, just for a roll call and acknowledge Selena.
Okay, so we're going to pull off four, we're going to pull off five.
That's it.
Uh, so, okay. Okay, so I'm going to entertain now a motion to move the consent agenda with the exception of item number four and five.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made, and second, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumlo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mellen.
Yes. Resolution number four.
Yeah, I just wanted to, before I moved it, I want to make a comment about Selena Hoxton, who lives around the corner from me in the second ward. She has taken the initiative to get signs, and I think a lot of people have seen them, the Bellevle Strong signs. And another young woman from the second ward, a woman-owned business called Highway Traffic Controlling, her name is Priscilla DeBarros. Priscilla actually donated the signs, but Selena made them and came up with this concept. And I just want to give her credit, she's sixteen years old, God bless her. She is, she is a spreader of positivity, which is exactly what we need right now. So, God bless her, and move that resolution. So God bless her, and move that resolution.
Second.
Sure, the motion has been moved by Councilman Vell and seconded by the deputy mayor. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumlo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Malhin.
Yes. So item number five is...
Make a motion to table.
Should we just table or defeat it?
Uh, you have to take that.
Huh? Right, because it would eventually change.
Just withdraw it.
Defeat it or withdraw?
You don't want to defeat it because it's going to come back on.
No, if you defeat it, it doesn't come back on.
No, you're going to, which one is it?
It's a resolution.
Yeah, but it's going to eventually have to be passed.
Right, but it might, the changes we make to the ordinance might change this, is what I'm saying. So there's no point in tabling this if it's going to be edited.
Just rather defeat it, yeah.
Defeat it. All right, so what we're going to do, council?
Even if you have to brought the same one back, you could.
Right, so council, instead of table this one, I'm going to ask, based upon the fact that we table the two ordinances that it relates to, and when we change those ordinances, this wording might change, so there's no point in tabling this one. We're, I'm going to just entertain, I'm not going to entertain. I'm going to call a vote on that, and we should defeat this, actually.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it, knowing that I'm going to...
Move it, just make a motion to move it.
Let's make a motion to move it.
Right, so we have a motion made to move it. Do we have a second?
Second.
So at this point, council, this will come back before us as a new, fresher version, but at this point, we, I guess we're not being advised, but we have to kind of defeat this.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion made and second clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
No.
DePena?
No.
Graziano?
No.
Robel?
No.
Strumlo Burke?
No.
Mayor Malhin.
No.
Resolution's defeated.
Okay, that's it. Uh, the only thing I have for new business is, do we want to have a quick discussion about we, because of the municipal election on May twelfth, that would have been our next council date, we did change the schedule to have another council meeting before that, which would be May seventh, which would actually be fifth, fifth, which would be a week from today. I, Mr. Manager, is there anything pressing that we have to meet on?
Uh, absolutely not. I think that if we skip the meeting, which would only be seven days from now, there would be no downside at all.
Mr. Martino, any reason why?
I, I don't have anything that I expect to be needed in the next week.
Madam Clerk? We have nothing. So this would then mean we're not meeting for a month, though.
Twenty-six.
If something comes up, you can always have...
If something, if something comes up, we have a special meeting.
It's less than a month, it's just...
No problem.
Right, so what we're going to do is, we're just going to direct the clerk to cancel the, issue a notice to cancel. So we will not, just so the council knows, we will not meet one week from today on Tuesday. We will not meet two weeks from today, which would be our municipal election. Uh, we will meet the second meeting of the month in May, which is the...
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth. If there's any reason that we need to meet before then, we'll call for a special meeting.
No problem.
May I just have one question?
Mr. Mayor, I have, um, new business.
Okay, give me one second, Councilwoman. I want to have the town manager go.
Well, I'm ready to go first.
Just, I, I forgot in my manager, uh, my manager's report, there's a, one of our team leaders
who has been working around the clock through this crisis. He's been super, and today's his birthday. So to Johnny O, on behalf of the mayor and council, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Chief.
Happy birthday, Chief.
Okay, I heard that Councilwoman Burke has a new item, new business?
Okay, uh, some time ago, I urged the town council to waive penalties and interest on late payments for property taxes for the second quarter during this pandemic, which fell on deaf ears. Now, our governor has signed an executive order to extend the due date to June first. This will relieve the struggle our taxpayers are facing. Bravo to Governor Murphy. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, just, just, Councilwoman, it, it didn't fall on deaf ears.
I'm sure, I'm sure you have led to comments, Mr. Mayor, so let's hear them.
Okay, so it did not fall on deaf ears. It would have been against the law for us to do that.
Right, okay, fine, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're done, I'm not. So that's the reason why the governor issued an executive order today, which gave us the authority to do that.
You're, you're always right. What can I say? Thank you, okay, the meeting almost over?
You could leave if you'd like, so the go-
Or maybe you could leave.
The governor's, the governor signed an executive order giving us the authority today to do that. So it did not fall on deaf ears.
We're talking about, about a month ago, Mr. Mayor, or two months ago, when I brought it up. Look in the minutes. Thank you, and I'm, I'm off the, uh, the record. Thank you.
Thank you. So when she brought it up two months ago, if she did bring it up, we did not have the legal ability to vote on that.
Right.
Today, the governor gave us the legal ability to vote on that, and the councilwoman's also incorrect because it did not change the date. All it did was extend the grace period. So again, we followed exactly what the governor asked us to do today. Uh, it did not fall on deaf ears several months ago. It, if we had no legal authority to act, and if we tried to act, our township attorney would have prevented us from acting because it would have been against the law. Okay, anybody else?
I have, uh, real quick, um, I just want to...
Just let the record reflect that Councilwoman Burke is off the call.
I just want to thank, uh, all of our staff that has been coming into town hall and from working at home these past couple of weeks, especially our OEM staff